Yeah, good morning, everyone. For those wondering, we are waiting till we have a quorum that managed to get through the weather. That first snowfall, you know how that is. I think we're there. All right, we are running a little late this morning because of the weather. I think we now have a quorum of commissioners who have made it through, so I will ask them to grab their seats and our illustrious clerk to take the roll call.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Green.
Here.
Antor. Morgan.
Here.
Jones. Bolter.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Coleman. Vice Chair Breevy.
Here.
Commissioners Teal.
Here.
Sparks. McLeod.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
LeGrand. Volkowski.
Present.
Womack. Wooden.
Here.
Gags. Chair Stack.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have thirteen members present, six absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I will now call on Commissioner Bolter for the invocation.
Is this on? Yeah, thank you. All right. Bow our heads, dear God. Thank you for the day you've given us. Thank you for this weather, even though we may have struggled to get here today. Thank you for this board and their willingness to serve this community. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. We will now move to our special order of business, and this morning we have representatives from the Grand Rapids County Convention and Arena Authority. Rick, good morning.
I am Rick Nguyen. I'm current chair and a county appointee, so thank you very much. Here with Rich McKeegan, our executive director, who's also in charge of ASM Global. We have a, we have some slides to show you. This is something we have been discussing with Al and your chair. We'll try to keep it, go through it quickly, but if there's any spot, oops, excuse me, that you'd like us to stop and ask questions, feel free.
Buildings are busy, so that is the good news. Again, this might be rehashed for most of you or many of you. The CAA is a state-enabled entity with representation from the city, county, state, and private industry. Org structure, we do have an executive committee, finance committee, and operations committee, and our community inclusion group, which is our diversity and equity group. Board members here, two county appointees, Commissioner Bolter as well as Mr. Nguyen. We've got ASM Global, the company I work for, with my full-time gig managing Banana Arena, DeVos Place, and DeVos Performance Hall. Financially, the entity is quite healthy. We're forecasting end of 2023 current year. Our fiscal runs concurrent with the counties to show over $20 million in reserves, and that 25 estimated for FY '22, last financials are actually showing at closer to 27. Over and above that, it should be noted, the CAA has spent over $20 million in capital over the last fifteen or so years. So the entity continues to be very, very healthy financially. The rink has been around 25, 26 years now. Griffin's delighted to have the Grand Rapids Gold, the G League team for the Denver Nuggets now playing downtown. We think that's going to be great for the venue, and we think it's going to be great for the community to have another major asset playing at the arena. The rink continues to be ranked one of the top six worldwide for facilities of its size, so we really do punch well above our weight. Some highlights from the year, again, a very good year. The convention center, quite frankly, I thought it was overbuilt when it opened. We've grown into it very, very nicely and continue to be very busy. Big box, 162,000 square foot. When the ball, when the building opened, it was the second-largest ballroom in America at 40,000 square feet. Again, great events. We just had Comic-Con there last weekend, an event that does really well. This coming weekend, we've got the Wine and Food Festival in Friday and Saturday night, so I encourage you to please come out. That's one of the, well, it's one of the highlights of my year, so. And then the theater continues to be very busy. A community our size to have four successful arts tenants is unique, and then we put as much as we can, over and above that, in the theater. Some of the highlights, Broadway with their relationship with an organization called Broadway Across America, BAA, have really done a great job in terms of upgrading the bookings. We did do an economic impact study. We've done two of them. The most recent one, we engaged Michigan Sport Consulting Group, the University of Michigan. What they found was the overall impact for the 2019 fiscal year was $82 million. So, again, a very good investment for these facilities by this community. Direct input, or excuse me, output at $27 million. Over 1,200 jobs, both full-time and part-time. And then community involvement. We continue to be very involved in the community by providing tickets to folks. One thing I want to point out, we have given almost $800,000 for calendar 2022 to nonprofits who act as concession workers at our concession stands at the arena. Again, that's one year, over three-quarters of a million dollars. What's next? The amphitheater continues to be a high priority, not just for the CAA but other stakeholders. Programmed right now at 12,000 capacity, probably looking about 54 events, about 30 of those being the live major touring shows, the balance being community events. This footprint, I know you're familiar with. We really feel that this opportunity unlocks development of undeveloped current land, so we think it's going to be a great asset, especially along the river with all the work that's being done there. Again, just, this is just a concept. This was put together in terms of what could be. There's no commitments amongst any parties that it will look exactly like this, but it does show the opportunity. Soccer stadium is being discussed. Stakeholders are interested in looking at basically a AAA or a AHL minor league version of soccer for the community. I think with demographic shifts and growth, I think it's a spectacular thing. I think with the U.S. hosting the World Cup, the timing is really, really strong, and looking at the right spot right now. Looking for the right spot right now. Some of you will recall the conversation about a new convention hotel. It was identified as a priority by CSL that did a study a few years ago. Obviously, COVID hit, that was put on pause. So I think the CAA will continue to assess that as an opportunity, but the feeling is we need to get to the arena, excuse me, the amphitheater and soccer stadium. We need to get to whether there's a project there or not, and then turn our eyes to that. How'd we do, Chair?
Caught me off guard. No one has made it before. Yeah, wow. Thanks for setting the standard. You ready for questions?
Absolutely.
All right. I think Commissioner Morgan has one.
Good morning. The Banana Arena is going to be 22 years old. Any plans to upgrade that or blow out that wall? I know that there was discussions, and it was built so we could expand the arena, but I think it's pretty well situated for its size.
So you're absolutely correct. The south wall, so the wall behind the stage, is not a weight or load-bearing wall, so that could be blown out, and you could still host events and operate. It was done that way in the hopes of, or in anticipation of potential expansion. In my opinion, that is not the right answer. Those seats are going to be behind the stage, so they are only going to be usable for non-hockey, non-tenant events two or three times, and the American Hockey League, a 10,800-capacity venue, is really well-positioned. So my position is, until the tenants say it's needed, I don't think it's needed. And the other piece is, and I assume you're all familiar with the arena, because the bowl itself, the seating area, is horseshoe-shaped, we actually compete with much bigger venues, because the 15, 16, 17,000-seat venues, they've got three, four, or five of those behind the stage, which, again, aren't usable for most concerts. So the CAA has been spectacular in terms of empowering the ASM team to look at capital projects. You saw the financial health of the entity, so it's been very, very strong. So we've not had to skimp. We've been able to put money into the building. We've done different projects. We've expanded the concourse. We beautified, but also made the front of the building much more secure with a kind of a plaza, a park plaza project, and we continue to look for opportunities to upgrade the building.
There's a brand-new roof.
Yep, yep, brand-new roof, new seats in the upper bowl, and we continue to hear from touring shows that are in venues every day, all across the world, really, how good this building looks for a rink that's now 26 years old. So it should be a point of pride for you and for the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. Just really quickly, on the soccer piece, when you talk about a kind of the analogy of an AHL to an NHL, just out of total curiosity, would we be looking at potentially trying to bring a USL championship team here, that level, or a lower league?
So the, the folks that are exploring it, I don't think have made a commitment to any league right now. I can say, I think with some safety, some coverage, that there are two leagues that were being or are being considered, the USL being one of them, which is, it's not part of the MLS, but it is viewed as the next best thing to the MLS, and different USL teams have a seating capacity of about 8, 10, 11,000. The MLS also has a AAA version called MLS Next Pro, so I think those are the two that they're looking at, and I know from at least a size-wise for the stadium, they're probably looking about 8,000 capacity. So it would fit well for either one of those assets.
That's up, I was just curious. I know it's a little more confusing, not a straight-line like with the NHL and the AHL and that relationship. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Volkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you both for your hard work and continued success, great return on our investment. For both the amphitheater and a potential soccer field, do you have a, and nothing to hold you to, I mean, we are recording this meeting, but like, yeah, that, do you have like penciled somewhere, like when, when do you think shovel's in the ground and bodies on the lawn, in a good way? I mean, when do you see that happening?
We're hoping both of them to be ready for the '25 season.
'25 season?
Yeah, so both seasons would start Memorial Day-ish. Yeah, so we're hoping for that. There's still a lot of work that needs to get done for both projects. I feel, I think we, as the stakeholders involved, feel very confident that we'll get there, but there's still, we need to finalize the numbers, which is being done now, and then finalize how it's going to get paid for, which is being done now.
Okay, and then for today, that when, when you did the presentations for us about the amphitheater, you also had us, and then we approved the opportunity for ASM to, to operate 20 Monroe Live, and so, again, all these parts and pieces, and I didn't see 20 Monroe Live on the PowerPoint, so is that still happening, or?
That conversation continues to happen, and I would say more deliberately, the CAA has been asked about involvement with 20 Monroe. If the CAA, if that gets figured out, there's a chance that ASM is involved. It is likely the case. The fact of the matter is, we need to have the amphitheater get done before I think we turn to that opportunity. Live Nation is a major partner for both of these. There's no reason, there's no way I'd recommend the CAA get involved at 20 Monroe without Live Nation's active involvement, that they need to be a party to that asset, as they need to be a party to the amphitheater asset. So it's our hope to get the amphitheater put to bed, make everyone feel good about that from a partnership perspective, and then start to seriously discuss 20 Monroe.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I can scratch one question off my list, because I was going to ask about 20 Monroe as well. What, if we were to, if a soccer stadium was to go forward, what is the, what seating capacity would a soccer stadium need for a league that you're looking at, and how many home games are you expecting to have there?
So it depends, obviously, on the league itself. Eight, eight to 10,000 is what's being talked about from a programmable capacity. I think the leagues that are akin to the ones that are being discussed are probably looking at 15 to 20 home games. Other utilizations we've talked about, you know, we're having conversations with Grand Valley. Not that they would move all their games there, but is there an opportunity to move a game there? We are having conversations with the Sports Commission in terms of potentially high school championship competitions. It is well-suited to host those type of events. And then we continue to explore the idea of year-round programming, so it's not just a summer asset, and a lot of the design conversation is being held around how else can these buildings be used, not just during the summer season. So the idea of broom ball fields being put on the soccer field, where it's not necessarily played on ice, but it is a controlled environment, a huge croquet, winter croquet fest, things that would engage people from downtown and students to engage with the facilities. That's what we're trying to get to.
My, my last, or my second-to-last question then is, you know, given that there's capacity is already lower than what you're estimating for the amphitheater. In the amphitheater, you're estimating 54 events, where you're estimating 15 to 20. Is there a way to have a dual capital project of an amphitheater that also serves as a soccer stadium? And, you know, I, given the fact that construction costs are where they're at, and, you know, we have, I realize that a main goal of the city and county arena authority is to create entertainment venues downtown, but we have limited space downtown for other things that are needed, and I wonder, is, is a dual amphitheater soccer stadium project a more efficient use of space and taxpayer resources?
It's been explored extensively, and I'm not aware of anywhere in the country that it's being done well, to have two venues serving both purposes. I'm open to the concept. My line has been, if there's one around, I'm happy to make the trip tomorrow, and we'll do it better than the way it's being done, wherever it is, but there really isn't. The orientation for the seating is different. The competition for dates is different. Keep in mind, if you've got ideally 30 concerts at the amphitheater, it's going to be tough to also then mask or serve as a home for a soccer stadium, and that's also assuming it's just one tenant. Potentially, there could be a ladies team. Potentially, there could be another tenant at the soccer stadium. So I think.
The leagues have expressed that, too.
Yeah, so I, I, I am, I don't claim to know a lot, but if somebody could point me in a direction where it's being done well, I'm delighted to explore that. Everything we've looked at to date demonstrates that it's not. Everything we've looked at to date demonstrates that it's not in the, in the asset's best interest or the users of the asset's best interest.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Well, I'm sorry. I had one last question. I just saw on my notes. In our discussions last year about how to improve communication between the CAA, both government entities and the broader public, you all committed, and I'm very thankful that you did it, putting your, your agenda packets and minutes online. Have you only met in August and June of this year? Because that seems to be the only thing on your 20, your, the only minutes I'm seeing for 2022. I'm wondering if maybe.
Met more than that? I'd have to check with our team in terms of why it isn't up to date if it isn't.
You know, I, if it's human error, that's perfectly fine. I just, you know, I know when you're starting a new practice, sometimes things trip up. It's all right. I just wanted to ask.
Might be fine for you.
Well.
If it's human error, I'm looking into it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sparks.
And I appreciate you mentioning it. We skipped over the org chart. I did reference the Community Inclusion Group. It's a group that does very good work, in my opinion. And again, I would encourage you to, and get out to the Wine and Food Festival. I think it's one of the most diverse events we put on. And it is large in part because of the CIG's involvement. They met with Showspan, the, the producers of the event, the co-owners with the CAA of the event. And they took a look at the advertising, and I'm, I'm going back years ago now, and said, there's no faces of color in any of your advertising. I mean, that, that's, that's an oversight. Showspan took that to heart and really shifted things. And it's become a priority, not just for that event, but for all of their events. So I'm very pleased that the CIG was able to get involved in a very direct way and then to see the results of that involvement. Because I really do feel the Wine and Food Festival is a great illustration of how this community is a diverse community and can celebrate together.
Yeah, we knew that, Roger. Okay, so Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be brief. I just want to say, this is probably the last time I'm going to get to talk to you guys in a public setting. And just, there's no secret that I was fairly critical of the CAA at one point in my tenure here. And I'm just so thankful for Rick's leadership and Rich's leadership and willingness to really try to rebuild the relationship with the county and with Al and with others. And it's been a really genuinely sincere effort. And it's really appreciated. And it's really a testament to you guys and rebuilding this really important relationship between county and CAA that's truly kind of the economic backbone of this community. So it's on you guys to continue that. But I really just appreciate you both. And Rick, I appreciate your willingness to step in as chair when you really didn't want to. So thank you for that.
All right, anyone else? Yep, not? Thank you, Rick and Rich, for the presentation. I know you indicated, Rich, you don't know much, but you know about winter croquet. And so, so kudos to you. And you'll have to send pictures because most of us can't even envision that, so. All right, thank you for that. Our next item is public comment. If there is anyone here that wishes to address the board with respective matters that are on our agenda only, you may do so at this time. Please identify yourself by name and where you reside, and you have up to three minutes.
All right, it's a special order of business agenda item. How you doing, everybody? My name is Deandre Jones. I stay at 967 Temerack Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan, Northwest. I wanted to speak on the King County Convention Arena Authority. I actually work as a stagehand for our local stagehand union. So I work for IATI. So I work at the DeVos Place. I work at the Van Andel. I work at the Performance Hall. I set up shows, I break them down. I do a lot of work here. So it's pretty cool to work at the DeVos Place, setting up shows, working at the Van Andel. I play semi-pro basketball. So it's pretty cool to see to go down at the Van Andel because it was at the Delta Plex at the time. And so this in full supporting, it's really cool to see that project being presented because I actually work as a stagehand for our local union. So I work in the event space, the entertainment space, and that was a cool presentation to see. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to address the board on an agenda item? I do not see anyone else, so we will move to our next item, which is the consent agenda. And I will call on Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the consent agenda item for today's date.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Discussion? All right, if not, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor. Morgan.
Yes.
Jones. Bolter.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman. Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks. McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand. Bolkowski.
Yes.
Womack. Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs. Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 13 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to our resolutions for today. And starting with 8A, I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 116. It comes from the Administrator's Office. It's the 2022 General Appropriation Act.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Bolkowski. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stuck. Just going through this, I had a question and I called Al yesterday. I know last year in our budget, we had appropriation for the Kent District Conservation District. I didn't see it in this part of it. It may be tucked away in the larger one. Has that been addressed? Or aren't we funding that?
And Jeff, I just asked Jeff that question because I recalled that. $25,000 Soil Conservation District.
Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, Commissioners Chair. Is this on? Sorry. It's not specifically called out on this particular budget. However, there is room, I believe, in the admin budget where we could fund that program, yes.
The intent was to fund another $25,000.
Okay. No, it's just in, just in the past practice. And if you're here long enough, it always was. The first thing to funding any program is you've got to get it on a line item in the budget. If it's not in there, it may not be there next year. And I didn't know if this was a priority going forward. I know in this 183 million dollar budget, seems trivial to be bringing up 25,000. But to the group that that goes to, what they do with it and the impact on that is important. So I'm just trying to get a clarification on the budgeting process. And if something's not in there, does it mean it won't be there next year? And if it's just tucked away in a contingency.
Yeah, we can make a note for next year to make sure it's included in the line item.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. And, you know, just running on Commissioner Ponstein's statements on the size of the line items, looking at it, we have line items already in this budget that are in that rough size, or at least the, have the same number of digits. And, you know, I just think even with its size, it makes, it would make sense to have this line item in budgets going forward, so.
We will, and we are committed to that relationship. I think that we hadn't funded them in so long that they were out. And when we prepared the budget, it just didn't come top of mind to put that line in. So it'll be there.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, it looks like we're ready to vote on the budget. Madam Clerk. Appropriations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 116, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor. Morgan.
Yes.
Jones. Bolter.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman. Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand. Bolkowski.
Yes.
Womack. Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs. Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 13 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 116 is adopted.
Thank you. For item 8B, I will now call on Commissioner Bolkowski.
I would like to move Resolution 118 of today's date, the amended apportionment report for 2022.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments? I, yes, Commissioner Bolkowski.
Yeah, I just want to thank, well, I don't, you can come to the microphone, but to thank Matthew, it's not a question, but a comment, that, you know, within hours of the election results in Rockford, which changed many, many pages of your math that you continue to do in such an excellent way. So again, within hours, as this is date stamped, you and your team updated everything and brought it to us to make sure, again, that all the tax rolls are in, in order. So again, thank you for your awesome work.
All right, anyone else? All right. If not, we'll go ahead and ask the clerk to take the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 118, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor. Morgan.
Yes.
Jones. Bolter.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman. Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks. McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy. LeGrand. Bolkowski.
Yes.
Womack. Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs. Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 13 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 118 is adopted.
Thank you. For item 8C, I'll call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move Resolution 119 of today's date. It is to accept a coronavirus emergency rental assistance housing stability services grant. It comes to us from Kent County Community Action.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner McLeod. Comments or questions? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stuck. So my question's more probably for Al and staff. Is there going to be a time where every emergency spending isn't going to be tied to, to the virus COVID-19? I mean, if you look in the, the background on this, it says it's for eligible households within Kent County who reportedly have a difficulty making timely payments of rent and utilities due to COVID-19 pandemic. There's people out there that are having problems paying rent that have nothing to do with COVID. I mean, are those folks being left behind? And the only one that we continually to beat this dead hammer is COVID-19?
My understanding is that the assistance that's been available in the past outside of COVID is still there. But there are still federal funds available specifically for COVID, and that's what the pass through is for. But we have Rachel Ahie here, and she can.
Yes, yep. To expand on that, for housing stability services, the only requirements are that you're a renter household and that you're below 80% AMI. So it kind of, it does not take into consideration if it was, if your emergency is due to COVID or not.
So this money can be used both ways?
Yes.
So why, why the emphasis on COVID-19? Someone that's out there that's struggling, hearing that there's money for COVID-19, and they're struggling with.
Yeah, I think due to the source of the funding, it came about through the coronavirus emergency rental assistance. But now it is moving forward as housing stability services.
Great. Any other questions or comments? I do not see any. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 119, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor. Morgan.
Yes.
Bolter, or, sorry, Commissioner Jones. Commissioners Bolter.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman. Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand. Bolkowski.
Yes.
Womack. Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs. Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 13 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 119er is adopted.
Thank you. For item 8D, I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move, I apologize. Sorry about that. I'd like to move FY 2023 National Highway Safety Traffic Administration for Michigan Office of the Highway Planning and Safety Grant of the 63rd District Court, today's date.
Support? Supported by Commissioner Morgan. That's Resolution 120 for the record. Any comments or questions? If not, that also is a roll call. So Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 120, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor. Morgan.
Yes.
Jones. Bolter.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman. Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy. LeGrand. Bolkowski.
Yes.
Womack. Wooden.
Yes.
Skaggs. Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 13 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 120 is adopted.
Thank you. That is the last of our resolutions for today. So I will now move to our second public comment. If there's anyone here from the public that wishes to address the commission with respect to matters of general county jurisdiction, you may do so now. Please identify yourself by name, where you reside, and you have up to three minutes.
How you doing, everybody? My name is Deandre Jones. I stay at 967 Temerack Avenue, Northwest Grand Rapids, Michigan. First of all, I would like to thank everybody in the community, whether they're an entrepreneur or anything that tells me that they appreciate my comments and my advocacy around the ARPA funds because this is a historic investment. And they tell me that one thing that they recognize is different from me is when I come up here and I speak about the ARPA funds, that I don't just talk about my project, that I think about the community as a whole. Too many times, just growing up and just seeing just different things from all walks of life, people always think about themselves. Of course, you know, you want to be able to get funding and you want to complete your dreams and you want to be able to be financially secure and make sure that you can take care of things when emergencies come. But as I've said, I'm a very selfless person. I just want to see my community eat. I think it's a lot of people that's hungry for their dreams and their goals and their visions and things that they want to accomplish. And not too many times do we get the opportunity or funding. Just listening to the CD Commission, Sanita Lanier recently said to one of our black leaders, and he was an older black man, she was like, I don't even know how this is going to happen or how you even got the funding to do this. Like, I'm completely surprised. And so that just lets you know that even when you're a government official, you don't even know how a lot of those things will come from other people. And so I just really appreciate that because I really do, even if I'm not where I want to be in, in life, of course, I'd rather, I feel like I should be a lot higher places. I feel like I should be looking to franchise and expand globally. At least that's where I would love to be right now. But I've seen a lot of people get their dreams. And I've seen the staff, even with the Diatribe and other organizations that I've advocated for and spoke about, seeing those people get recommendations for funding gives me hope. I mean, I was, I love to see myself up there. But I believe, like I said, when my dreams will come true, I've helped a lot of people in the community.[1750.02] will come true, I've helped a lot of people in the community, I've given back, I've been selfless. I've been a very, very selfless person, and my opportunity will come, my time to shine will come. And so I just want to thank those people in the community that stopped me and say, "DeAndre, I appreciate you speaking for the whole community as a collective," because sometimes we get so caught up in our own dreams that we forget that other people deserve the opportunity, too. And so, thank you. I also wanted to say that when you guys actually got to reach from Link Up, that was me. I was actually a Link Up fellow. I reached out to Teresa when I first heard about the ARPA funds from Commissioner Womack, and Isaac DeGraff reached out to you guys because of me. So that was my doing to get you guys to come to the Third Ward and engage with our community. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Marcus Ringnalda. I'm a Gaines Township resident, and I am also speaking on the ARPA funding issue and advocating one last time for y'all to consider funding the Four Star Theater. I do want to commend you, as someone who's been working on finding public funds to support this project for well over a year and chasing this dream for five years, that your process was highly transparent and accessible. However, when I saw the preliminary list, I am left scratching my head at some of these issues. It's publicly communicated that you're looking for transformative projects, and I find it serendipitous, maybe, that I'm following the CAA. The Four Star Theater is the epitome of a transformative project. 200 events a year, year-round. We can do croquet in there, too. And 50,000 visitors to the South Division neighborhood, that little sliver of the First Ward that often gets forgotten about. You will hear about projects like the Four Star Theater that cost three to five times as much or even 100 times as much. And if you're measuring impact by economic opportunity, revenue generation, jobs created, the theater is two to three, the Four Star Theater is two to three times more impactful with its capacity to bring in almost 1,000 people for 200 events a year. So I know the, the list is, was defined as preliminary. I'm hoping this project still finds a way. Any amount helps. With a half million, I could replace the roof and get an awesome new marquee, Best in the City. Could order that next month. So just a few things to chew on as, as you work through your final determinations. I just, I just implore you to really dive deep into these projects and really connect to that transformative impact. You know, a modest enhancement to an educational or cultural resource we already have may be a great investment, but it's not transformative. So I just don't want that piece to be forgotten about here. There's amazing projects that are getting funded here, but some of them are very confusing. Some of your larger set-asides are for projects that, you know, it's a trail with a workforce housing development or something like that. And it's just, I don't know all the details of these projects, but I am in real estate and construction, and I'm going through the catalog, and I'm really trying to figure out, are they doing an end-around here to get one thing funded and then subsidize something else? So I just want you to be conscientious of the funds you're doing. The Four Star Theater in particular is a very straightforward project, and if we get those funds, we're moving ahead. If we don't, I'm not sure what to do next. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, if not, we'll move to our next item, which is administrators' report.
Yes, I'm very pleased to inform you today that Josh Spencer has accepted the Strategic Impact Director position. Many of you will recognize Josh. He's been a vice president with Canary Consulting and has worked with 54 nonprofits in Kent County and also is very experienced with state and federal grants. The impact of this position will be to focus on large county initiatives and county initiatives and large community initiatives that the county is a partner in. And so we're excited to have Josh aboard. He'll be starting in mid-December. Just want to take a minute. We have, Jeff and Marvin are still out in the audience. Obviously, they're the point of the spear on the budget process, and just like to thank the board, Jeff, Marvin, Fiscal, and many others who worked to bring us through the budget process successfully, and the efforts are very much appreciated. Also, just wanted to mention that we are making great progress with the Sustainability Business Park. We've been meeting intently, usually twice a month, and even though we went down to once a month, we can kindly see, we can start to see that we probably will hit that year as far as having a solid recommendation and have fully vetted it. In fact, it's really exciting to kind of see many of the partners who initially were opposed are starting to see partnership opportunities. So I think that this is one that could very well have a good ending, but we're still working hard, still in the weeds on some important issues. Please watch your inboxes for my performance evaluation. We did kind of true it up with the calendar year, and so you will be getting those soon. I very much covet your comments. You know, we've had almost a year and a half together, and I think it's really important to do this and also to have, to have this board, since we do have eight that are moving on, do an act, take an active role with my evaluation. So you'll see that soon. Also, we're doing pretty good on the broadband survey. I mean, our, our goal was to have the best response rate of any county in the state. We're about halfway there. I think Monday, the numbers I saw, we were close to 4,000. The goal is 8,000, and we'd love to get even many more than that. But we're learning already. I think there's some real value in the responses we're getting. And remember, the reason we're doing this is that the feds' maps, basically, if one house in a census unit has broadband, then they say the whole census unit has broadband. And so it's really not true, and if we don't have a map to counter the feds' map, we will not be able to access the federal money to, to move the dial on broadband. Also, let's see. Obviously, I don't know that I need to say much about ARPA, but obviously discussion, discussions continue with the goal of completing at least the major part of the allocation yet this year. And just wanted to mention with Rich and Rick here that, you know, Mandy's comments were appreciated because they have been very much true to engaging the county. I'm involved with the teams that are looking at the financing and design of the amphitheater and also the soccer stadium. And so, yes, we have really appreciated their willingness to fully involve the county along with grand action. And I think that is it for today. Yes?
All right. Thank you. For those of you anxious about who the other two in eight moving on would be, I think it's six moving on, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, eight new. Eight new, six moving on. Thank you for that clarification.
All right.
There's some concern on faces around the table, I saw, so, yeah.
I'm going to lead that parade.
We are still canvassing, so, you know.
All right, well, we'll get back to you then. Okay, thank you for that. We'll move on to the next item, which are reports. Are there any reports from Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Jones?
I'd like to report that the belt line is really, really backed up today due to the weather. That's my report.
Yeah, thank you. I know I promised I would be disciplined about what's reported and what's miscellaneous. I'll have to get back to you on that. All right, Vice Chair Breavy.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to give a brief report from the West Michigan Sports Commission. We had our meeting earlier this week, and I see Mike Gusweiler in the audience, too, so I feel the need to share this amazing brochure. They have kicked off a winning campaign to raise about $11 million to make improvements at the Meyer Sports Complex, and that the improvements would really bring men's and women's sports into more of an equitable alignment, adding softball fields, and, you know, another championship field would be very welcome. It's a high-use facility, and adding pickleball courts. So I think that's a great partnership, and I hope, you know, we have a winning team to raise these funds. So it should be a, a really good program, and now the ball is in your court to help us move this forward. And if you're interested in providing some funding or donation, let me know, and I'll let you know where you can send it. Thanks.
No winter croquet?
Ball's in the air, that one.
Broom ball, there we go. Any other reports? All right, no reports. In addition, we'll move to miscellaneous. Does anyone have any miscellaneous items? Wow. Well, I have a few, but before I get to mine, I'm going to ask our clerk to do just a brief recap on the elections, if you would.
You bet, Mr. Chair. So I still have a little election hangover. I don't know about everybody else, but we, we did have a very good election on November 8th. We saw in Kent County a 59% voter turnout, which is not the high-water mark for a gubernatorial election. That was in 2018 with a 62% voter turnout. So we did have, we had a higher than what we used to have in the past, but not, certainly not record-setting compared to 2018. We did have 301,27 voters that turned out in this election. That's, of those, we had, we had 122,800 absentee voters. That was a 94% rate, because we did issue 130,000 absentee ballots. This is the first time since, in a, in a major election since 2018, when we implemented, when we voted for no reason absentee voting. First time that we haven't had more voters cast an absentee ballot than show up in the polls. This election, it was 60% showed up in person on Election Day and 40% voted absentee. Again, I'm kind of thinking, I was kind of of the impression that this would be kind of the, establish almost the new benchmark for expectations of absentee voting, simply because in 2020, we were dealing with a pandemic and all kinds of things, so it was, it was a little hard to get a real baseline for who's really going to start voting absentee, who is going to be showing up in person. So this may be the new benchmark. We, as you probably know, we did have an issue with our website, our reporting website, that went down around midnight in the middle of the action. Just want to be very, very clear that despite the public-facing website going down, which is simply a service to the public, the campaigns, the candidates, the media, it had no impact on the transmission or actual official purpose reporting of our results. So we continued our work despite not being able to report that on our website. We immediately were able to find a, kind of a backup plan that provided updated results, though not at a precinct level detail or interactive, is what we're used to. That just all kind of happened as we had so many, so many results coming in. By the time we had that backup plan, it was really kind of a lull in getting those results. So it wasn't, you know, there wasn't a whole lot going on at that moment in terms of receiving results. But we did have 100% of our precincts reported just before 5:00 on Wednesday morning, which was 22 hours after polls opened. That was two hours quicker than my expectations. So I'm, I was pleased with that, even though some, sometimes it's hard to wait. I think somebody named Tom Putty said the waiting's the hardest part, and I've been a candidate, so I, I've been there. But, but the local clerks, our election workers, my staff, my team, they did a great, great job. We are in the middle of the canvas going on right now, so if you have time and want to pop over and just observe what we do to make sure that the election is secure and that the results are accurate, we'd love to have you stop by and just observe that. The law requires us to have that completed by Tuesday, and again, here in Kent County, we are pretty thorough, and we expect that will take us all of, until Tuesday, to get that accomplished. We have had some members of the public attend, both from Republican, Democratic Parties, the League of Women Voters, some folks who had hoped to take pictures of the tapes while we were doing our canvas, which we had to just let them know our, our, those materials, that our time, our attention needed to be focused on running in an accurate canvas. So those would be available after the canvas is done. We'll begin audits in December. Our post-election procedural audits that include hand tallies, we'll begin those as soon as possible, assuming there are no recounts requested. That obviously would get pushed off a little later, should there be any recounts requested. But other than that, it was a good election year, and I look forward to the next one in just a couple months.
Yes, it's already upon us. So thank you for your report and all the hard work. This is really not a discussion, but go ahead, Commissioner Ponstein. You have a miscellaneous item.
I just got a point about elections. Obviously, we pass Prop 2 if all looks good. I know the Ottawa County clerk has already been on the news saying, "All right, we're going to have to have nine days of voting, and it's going to be an expensive expense," which is worth it. But his question is, and maybe, I don't know if our clerk knows, is who's going to pay for that? Is this going to be a county 100%? We pick up the tab, or...
I can answer some of that.
Yeah, a good question. Maybe you have a, a short answer.
Real quick, yeah.
I will say there's a lot of things from Prop 2 that will require us to come back and, and maybe do a presentation at some point.
Certainly, I'd be happy to. I have some philosophical and policy thoughts, but administratively, this is, I'm deeply concerned. We have a lot of work to do to implement some wholesale, sweeping, broad changes here, and that is going to come at a cost to the state, and it is going to come at the cost to the county. Bottom line, it's going to be very costly, and we don't even know fully what that will cost to the taxpayers. But there's, there's a lot of things we have to implement, and the both, that should come from the county's funds, the state funds, as well as local funds when it comes to postage and things like that for absentee materials. You know, obviously, federal, you know, the federal government implements, you know, HAVA funds, the Help America Vote Act funds, but I think, I think the state and the counties and the locals are going to bear the brunt of it.
So, yeah, more to come. There really is a lot for us to absorb in that, and so we'll be looking for some more detailed, maybe a work session where we can walk through that more detail. So, all right, with that, I have a couple of other items. First of all, back to ARPA. Thank you again for participating in this process as we go forward and for attending the meeting on Monday. I know at Monday's meeting, I had suggested, no, I think I stated, that we would be looking at this again on the December 6 meeting. There is no December 6 meeting. The meeting is December 1 is the target date. That's still the primary target for us to be able to get the resolution up, only because we only have one more meeting after that. So we have one safety meeting. If we can't get it done by December 1, and that's December 15. Am I right this time? So the target is December 1 to get this resolved. A couple of other things. We have been working on establishing a mobility steering committee that is a community-wide effort in order to look at and explore and recommend as to alternatives for public transit across the county, and that process is moving forward. We have asked Commissioner Coleman and Commissioner Bolkowski to participate on behalf of the commission in that county-wide effort. More to come on that later. We are also exploring a concept for managing the parks process going forward. There has been a suggestion that we use a parks commission. I have asked a number of folks to sit on a task force to evaluate that and come back and make a recommendation. That would include Commissioners Teal, Commissioners Hennessy, Al Vanenburg, Sam Moore, and one more commissioner to be announced later for the process, to probably be wrapped up in the first quarter of next year. Couple of other items. There has been a request for some ongoing discussion about how we assess and evaluate bond proposals as they come to us for approval. We have looked at that. We are, we're considering a process for a specialized bond review committee, but that is in the review. We've looked at that. We'll be coming back, probably the first part of next year, again, with, with the concept that we suggest we consider. Then, also, we are looking at a possible board reshuffling, a restructuring. Right now, as everyone knows here, we have two standing committees. With the expansion of two more commissioners, we will then have 21. That then raises the question whether two standing committees with 10 each is, is the best way to approach this, or whether this is the time for us to take a hard look at whether we move to three or perhaps four standing committees with reassigned responsibilities. Obviously, that's not going to happen before January 1. That will take more effort, but I did want you to know that we are taking a hard look at that issue and coming back with a possible restructuring. We can even bring in some of our commissioner emeritus to, to sit on some of those, Roger. Let's see. I think that is it from me. Anything else from anyone else? Okay, if not, I will call on Commissioner Bolter for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, to Thursday, December 1, 2022, at 8:30 for an official meeting.
That is supported. I hear somebody. All the papers say yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.